Good evening, everyone. I hereby call to order the December 2017 Meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. I'd invite you to please join me and pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for coming. We will begin with the village clerk's report. Clerk Bruno, please.
Yes, we have some due to timing. There were three payrolls that were processed, 535 trash tags for salt, the deputy clerk attended one planning board meeting, and in observance of the upcoming holidays, the clerk's office will be closed on Monday, December 25th, and Monday, January 1st.
Thank you, Clerk Bruno. Trustees, we have a single set of minutes in your binders from the November 15th regular board meeting. You've had a chance to review these minutes, and at this time, I would ask if there's a motion to approve the minutes.
I'm going to move.
Is there a second? That was Major followed by Schneider. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, minutes are approved. Moving on to the treasurer's report. I think it was always to Treasurer Day for work. This month, out of the general funds, the A Fund, we spent $23,423.11. Out of the F Fund, Water Fund, $5,035.63. Out of the G Fund, Sewer Fund, $2,188.48, for a grand total of $30,647.22. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
That was Trustee Ezroti followed by Murphy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's report is accepted. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Schneider followed by Major. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll pay the bills this month. Moving on to zoning report. Trustee Ezroti, please.
This month, our code enforcement officer, John Fenton, issued three building permits, performed one building inspection, submitted and investigated zero complaints. Zoning issued three violations, zoning violations, went to one court hearing, engaged in four municipal searches, and scheduled zero fire inspections.
Thank you, Trustees Ezroti and Mr. Fenton for that. Now we come to the point in our evening where we welcome public comment on just the agenda items. There's a chance to talk about anything you care to towards the end of the meeting, and I'll just briefly explain what's on the agenda tonight, so we can maybe have a useful discussion if you care to do so. We have some budget modifications every month. We, you know, some lines go over, some go under. We keep the money shifting back and forth, keep track of it, and so that's kind of the housekeeping thing. The big numbers in there this month have to do still with paying for Pine Street, recoding the clarifier tanks down at the treatment plant, that was a $55,000 job, and, let's see, we've got the purchase of the dump truck, I believe.
And the Sander.
And the Sander, yes. Getting ready for winter. We are going to be authorizing new planning, zoning, and code enforcement fee schedules. This is how much does it cost if you want to put up a fence, a shed, if you want to do a large project and get a site plan, how much escrow do you have to put aside? I think we raised this last about two years ago. Also, we've added some pros sections that will hopefully make this easier for applicants to know what they need to have before they come to the planning board, in particular explaining the need for escrow accounts. If your application requires the village to engage an engineer or a planner to review the application, you need to put up some money upfront to cover those costs, and then if they're, if it's not all used, it comes back to you. But we're just going to be very clear upfront in this document when it's handed to people, you may have to put up some money first. We have a new local law that we're proposing, updating our solid waste. If you look at the code now, under solid waste, which basically means garbage collection, it talks about garbage days on Monday and Thursday. You need to separate your green, white, and glass receptacles. You're going to come get a big paper bag from the clerk's office to remember those. So it's old, and the language that we're putting in this legislation that I really care about, I know a lot of residents do, is there will be penalties for leaving your garbage can out all week, which is something we have not been able to enforce because the code was so old and dates from a time when there were no private haulers in Tivoli, and these big cans didn't even exist on our sidewalks. So we're going to look at that. Tonight, we would just be setting a public hearing for next month that would lead to, hopefully, the passage of that new law. Now, we just got our brand-new dump truck, which will be getting registered and insured tomorrow, and hopefully, we'll be collecting the garbage next Tuesday. It's a beautiful, brand-new truck, which means we get to sell the old junker and see what we can get for it. So we're going to authorize the sale of the old truck. And then the last two, and most important, we will resolve our intent to transfer ownership of the water and sewer systems to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. And related to that, at the same time, we want to authorize ourselves to apply for any funding opportunities that may come up related to that process, even, you know, developing a transfer agreement, even before we agree to it or disagree with it, you know, there's costs associated with that. So we would do that at the same time. So with that brief overview, is there any public comment on those agenda items? And you'll all have another chance to talk on these or anything else at the end of the meeting. So if everyone's okay for now, we'll proceed into our business. Trustees, we'll begin with budget modifications. We discussed these in the workshop. And again, you see the Sander in there, $5,200 for the new Sander, and that 49, as I said, for the clarifier tanks. Is there a motion to adopt these budget modifications?
I don't know.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Major followed by Murphy. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Budget modifications are adopted. Next, we have resolution authorizing planning, zoning, and code enforcement fee schedules. We've also reviewed this for a couple of weeks now. Want to thank Trustee Ezroti for some work he did today comparing what we charge to other municipalities, making sure we're not way out of whack, but also that we're keeping up with sort of what it costs the village to provide these services. If you're building your house, we want to make sure it doesn't fall down on you. It's about safety, and of course, fire inspections, et cetera. So with that, is there a motion to authorize the new fee schedule?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Schneider followed by Ezroti, and we have a roll call vote here. Is there any discussion before we get to that? Deputy Mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Ezroti.
Aye.
Trustee Murphy.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Resolution is adopted for the new fee schedules.
Yeah, the work that I did was to compare those schedules with that neighboring municipalities and the to be involved.
Thank you, Trustee Ezroti. Next, we have a resolution to set a public hearing regarding local law C proposed of 2017 entitled solid waste. Again, this has to do with both village and private haulers, how they can collect garbage, what kind of receptacles, when they can be on the street, when they have to be off the street. I think the new thing here is that if your can is out on the wrong day, you can be given an appearance ticket and brought into court, and the minimum fine is $50. Now, we hope to not spring that on people right away. We're going to pass this. We're going to let everyone know. There'll be a nice letter. This is coming, but I have to say, in seven years of being on this board here and over there, the garbage cans out all week is one of the number-one complaints I've heard from residents all these years. So we hope to finally get to that. And do you want to tell us an anecdote about Aunt Em?
Well, when I am pushing my niece in her stroller and I have to go out into, you know, get off the sidewalk and go into the street to avoid garbage cans, I get mad. So, yeah, for safety, and, you know, and usually to get in the head, right?
Yes, and, you know, there'll be a public awareness campaign. We'll let everyone know the new rules, but we are serious about it. And in addition to safety, we have done a lot of work and gone to a bit of expense to replace and expand our sidewalks in the village, and kind of defeats the purpose when you can't use them because there's a 55-gallon can every 30 feet, right? So with that, is there a motion to, oh wait, we need to get the date under too. Evening folks.
Just set the public hearing.
All right, so the public hearing, we're proposing our next board meeting, January 17th at 7:00 PM would be the hearing. Okay, so with that, is there a motion to establish the public hearing on local law C of 2017 for 7:00 PM on January 17th, right here in this room?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Ezroti.
Aye.
Trustee Murphy.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
I also vote aye. So, folks, if you have things you want to tell us about the garbage can law, it'll be posted on the village website tomorrow. You can always come to village hall, to clerk's office, read a hard copy. I think we had a copy or two up here. This is a section of our code that has been at least 30 years old, and I'm glad we're finally getting around to it. So 7:00 PM, January 17th. Okay, next is resolution authorizing the sale of our old, beat-up dump truck. We hope to get something for it. We were using this last to install the new backboards at the basketball court, and it began to smoke. It looked like James Bond Q had worked on this truck, and he was a getaway screen. Is there a motion to authorize the sale of surplus items of the village of Tivoli, including the 2004 Ford 550 dual-wheel dump truck?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Schneider followed by Murphy. Roll call vote. Deputy Mayor, Major. Trustee Murphy.
Aye.
Trustee Ezroti.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Hope we get something for it, right? Next, we come to the resolution of intent to transfer ownership and management of the village's water and sewer systems to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. I'd like to put this on the table, and then we can have some discussion. Is there a motion to put this resolution on the table?
So moved.
That was Trustee Ezroti, fittingly our longest-serving trustee. I think you've been dealing with this longer than any of us, so. And seconded by Deputy Mayor, Major. Trustees, if you have any comments or discussion at this time, I've prepared a statement, which I think will speak for all of us, but if you have anything else you'd like to say.
Take it away, Jim.
Tonight, the village of Tivoli takes an important first step to address our ancient and crumbling water and sewer infrastructure. Tonight is the culmination of three and a half years of diligent effort by village government and residents, spanning two mayoral administrations, to find the best way forward and ensure that residents of this community, now, next year, and in decades to follow, have safe and dependable water and sewer services at the best possible cost. That Tivoli has suffered for at least the last two decades from old infrastructure and deferred maintenance on both systems is beyond dispute. We had another severe break on Broadway exactly one week ago, and in a moment of painful irony, as I was writing this at 2:30 this afternoon, we were alerted by Claire Moore of Faroe Avenue that there was another water main break just this afternoon. Our systems are in bad shape. That is a factual statement on which we can all agree. But what is to be done? That is a question which Tivoli's government and residents have been grappling with arduously in recent years. In 2014, my predecessor, Mayor Brian Cranagh, and the village board applied for and won an $80,000 grant from Dutchess County's Shared Services and Consolidation Grant Program to fund an exhaustive engineering and financial analysis of all aspects of the water and wastewater systems. Thirteen highly qualified engineering firms answered the request for proposals to perform the study. From this broad field, the village chose Thai and Bond, an outstanding firm with over 150 years of water and sewer experience. It took them 18 months to complete the studies. I think we've all seen these. I have copies here. There are these two large documents. They really do cover everything. One is water, one is sewer. Tivoli was also able to develop a third report under the grant, which is a much smaller document. This is a transfer feasibility report, framing projected costs under continued village ownership and projected costs to ratepayers if we were to transfer ownership and operations of both systems to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. These reports were made available to the board and residents in May of 2017. Since that time, hard copies have been available for public review at the clerk's office and the Tivoli Free Library, and also available digitally on the village's website. To explain and field questions about the findings of these reports, the village held two public presentations with representatives from both Thai and Bond and the DCWWA on May 18th and June 22nd of this year. I know many of you were at at least one of those meetings. A third public water and wastewater forum was held with the board and residents on November 16th. Video of all those meetings has been available for subsequent viewing on Panda 23, thank you Panda, and the village website for months. Attention to the entire process, the grant, the reports, and the meetings has been consistently advertised in the village's quarterly newsletter and in the last two State of the Village addresses delivered in April 2016 and 2017. Discussions among residents have circulated on social media. I spoke about it explicitly when asked to address the Tivoli Merchants and Artists Business Association. That was in October. No one in this village can claim that they didn't know about these critical discussions, the state of our water and sewer systems, and the decision before all of us, before this board and the users of these systems. We have done everything we could to make this as open and public and hear from everyone as we could do. So what was in the reports? Briefly stated, the reports delivered the following information to our community. Our water and wastewater systems are old and in need of myriad costly repairs and upgrades. These reports organized the needs into four prioritization categories: immediate, sometimes we call that yesterday, 0 to 5 years, 6 to 11 years, and 11 to 20 years. All of these were given cost estimates, including a 20% contingency to anticipate surprises, change orders, and other unexpected costs which come up. We know there are always surprises, and these reports take that into account by that 20% contingency cushion. These reports indicate that our little village, whose entire annual operating budget is about $1 million, needs $9.5 million in the first five years if we are to do the upgrades and replacements that we ought to have. So within the context of that daunting need, there is a choice: continued village ownership, in which this and future village boards seek the grants and loans to fund repairs and replacement, administer all that funding with the help of the clerk, and oversee all the capital projects that we hire grant writers, engineers, project managers to assist us. Or transfer ownership and operation of the systems to the DCWWA and let that institution find and administer the funding and execute the capital projects that the systems require. In either scenario, our quarterly bills will increase dramatically. What is the DCWWA? Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. It is not Dutchess County, nor is it a private or for-profit company or corporation. To be very precise, it is a public benefit corporation created by an act of New York State in 1991 at the request of the county legislature. The DCWWA's sole chartered purpose is to take over and run troubled water and sewer systems from public and private entities in Dutchess County who are unable to bear the burden of maintaining and operating these services themselves. The DCWWA has 23 full-time staff, including grant writers, project managers, technicians, and administrators. Since the release of the reports after eight solid months of ongoing and public deliberation, it is the unanimous opinion of the village board of trustees that the best path to ensure a reliable future for water and sewer services for residents of Tivoli is to transfer to the authority. We have spent months engaging and polling this community, and we know we have the support of the majority of residents. It is our job to reflect and represent the will of Tivoli's voters, and also to lead our community where challenges are difficult and daunting. I believe we are doing a lot of the former and probably a little of the latter here tonight. We know that this is a controversial decision, and it has its opponents. Their views and ours have been fully voiced and debated over the last eight months. There are many arguments on both sides for and against transfer. They were exhaustively aired in the memorable community forum of November 16th, and we have a tape of that. It's laughing. I will not reiterate them all again this evening because they will be heard again. Tonight is just the beginning of a very long process, and let me explain that process which begins with tonight's vote. So tonight, we've resolved our intent to transfer. That permits the beginning of the creation of a transfer agreement. That will be a document, a contract, that is developed by both the DCWWA and the village of Tivoli. It'll go back and forth, we'll work something out. If that document comes together, that agreement, and both parties are happy, both parties authorize it. That process, I'm guessing, could be six to 12 months, I think. When both parties arrive at a document they can both agree to, the Water Authority goes to the county legislature and asks them to, because they're the only ones who have the power to do so, to draw a water and sewer district around the village of Tivoli, essentially all the users of water and sewer around here. The county legislature draws that. Then there's a 45-day permissive referendum period when a, it's a very small threshold, I can't remember the number right now, but a small number.
5% of voters.
5% of Tivoli voters can sign a petition, take it to the county legislature, and force a referendum. And I think that that may well happen. I think there may be 5% of this community thinks transfer is not the best idea, and frankly, I would be quite confident myself signing that petition and having a referendum because I don't think we have anything to fear or hide here. I know we don't. If we're really wrong and out of touch with this community, you know, let's have a vote. I would much rather have the people decide than just the five of us in isolation. That's better for us. I think that's better for you, and it'll certainly look better in 20 and 30 years when they look back and say, hey, that board just did that, or this community came together as a community and made a decision. So that's the process. If it comes to that referendum and the drawn district is voted down, then Tivoli keeps the water and sewer, and we can talk about what would happen then. But if that referendum, you know, if the drawn district prevails, then the transfer goes forward, and these water and sewer systems, the pipes, the right to access the wells, the water tower, the treatment plant, all of that, the hydrants, all that infrastructure will be owned and operated by the Water Authority. So that's the process. This is just the very beginning of like pushing the ball rolling, but we think it's important to push that ball. So that's the process. We respect the viewpoints of all those who disagree tonight and in a possible eventual plebiscite if it comes to that. We five are residents of the village, and we pay the same bills that you do. We get our water from the same tower, and it travels through the same pipes. We have studied and deliberated and agonized, frankly, over this choice with the best of our hearts and minds. We have been elected by this community to face and make these decisions. We believe transfer is the right choice. It is with a clear conscience and a confident expectation of a brighter future for Tivoli that I will now ask the trustees for a roll call vote on this resolution. Is there a roll call vote on this resolution expressing our intent to transfer to the DCWWA?
That motion?
I'd like a motion and a second.
So moved.
Is that a motion?
Second, so moved.
All right. Trustee Schneider followed by Trustee Ezroti. Roll call vote then, sorry, yes, I see why that was confusing. It's on the table, let's have a vote. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Enthusiastically, aye.
Trustee Murphy.
Aye.
Trustee Ezroti.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
And I've also vote aye, and the resolution is adopted. And lastly on the agenda tonight, related to that, is a resolution authorizing submission of funding applications for water and sewer system and wastewater capital project needs. This will allow us to start chasing money to keep this ball rolling if anything comes along, and we have a few ideas out there. There are certain county grants that we could go after. So is there a motion?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Major Murphy, any discussion on that?
No, I mean, this is, I think this is great because this will show to everybody that the price tag is there, we know what it is. That's without any grants or funding whatsoever. So this will give us the opportunity to go after those grants to lower the cost, so not only us, but also for DCWWA.
Exactly. Roll call vote, please. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Murphy.
Aye.
Trustee Ezroti.
Aye.
And Trustee Schneider. Resolution is adopted. Our next board meeting will be Wednesday, January 17th, 2018, at 7:00 PM here at Los DePoisers Hall, and remember, that is also the public hearing on solid waste garbage cans. That will be preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM, and we also will have our regular workshop the week before, January 10th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. Moving on to committee reports, Trustee Ezroti, please.
Yes, I get to read the November water report, which we talked about at our November meeting, and I'm going to say that most of the wells, with the exception of the Ball Block well, were running at capacity during that time. But I'm going to go on to take a look at the height of the water tower. The water tower is usually between 165 feet and 170 feet. That's what gives us our pressure, what provides water in case of fires or other emergencies. On the 6th of November, and this was three days into our knowledge that there was a leak, and our inability to identify where that leak was, the tower was down to 138 feet. So that's a 30-foot drop in the amount of water in the water tower. The notes on this report show that we had to bring in, we had to seek help from the New York Royal Water Authority, and we brought in 45,000 gallons of water, which is about 80% of our daily pumping of water on the 6th and the 7th to fill in for that water drop. The accident or the breakage happened to be on private property, and it was a place where the water flowed into a creek, so you couldn't even see it on the ground, but we did get some help. We got help from Red Hook, and that they'd collected garbage that day. We got help from other entities who helped us find that water. What that kind of an event is, it tells us that we have a wonderful DPW who does that work, but it also tells you that three guys are not enough, and that you need extra resources and expertise when something like that happens to you. It is my personal hope that having the Dutchess County Wastewater Authority engaged will provide us that help without putting undue financial stress on the village. So that's the water report. I also report on the LoSAP program, which is a program for our firefighters, where once a year, they are, we do an inventory of the activities that they've undertaken, and by attending meetings, attending fire events, attending emergency events, they have earned a total of 50 points. They receive $500, which goes into a service award, which is invested with the Royal Bank of Canada, and at the time that they reach 65, they receive those monies and whatever income that they have generated. I reported last month that we've had a 6% return for the eight or nine years that this has been. In fact, this year, we distributed out $16,000 to firefighters, and we now have approximately $150,000 with the Royal Bank of Canada.
It's one of the nice perks for our volunteer fire department who are unpaid.
Yeah, and it has to be designed.
A little something for them.
Designed very carefully because you don't want your volunteer fire department to lose the designation. Designed very carefully because you don't want your volunteer fire department to lose the designation of volunteer. If you pay them, they lose the designation of volunteer. So what we do is we award them a service award and HILI, which goes in to this tax deferred account.
Thank you, trustee Israti. Trustee Schneider.
Okay, so I have the Village of Tivoli Justice Court Report for the month of November. Total charges received were six, charges disposed were 23. And $2,114 was collected and remitted to the state controller.
We should just mention clerk Bruno. The court report this month seems like it was a strange copy or something. Like half the page is blank. So while it has arrest dates, sentences, and fees and fines and whatnot, it doesn't have the charges on the left side. So we'll just take a look at that later and see. Maybe he weren't sent the entire document. I think it was just some clerical event that happened, but it is missing something this month. So if we're able to find, complete one and keep that in the record, that'd be great.
I make copies of what I receive.
Yeah, so we have a little sleuthing to do to find out.
Ooh, investigate.
Investigate, alright. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Schneider. Deputy Mayor Major.
Okay. I guess first I'd like to say that Winter Fest was great with the kids in the hot tubs and the horse and carriage.
And actual snow.
Actual snow and.
And the cookies.
Thank you. And the lights went on. Everything worked. It was great. Thanks to the Tivoli Fire Company, a special Tony Christie for everything. Tivoli Free Library, historic Red Hook, Murray's, Santa Fe, Broccoli Pizza, The Corner, Tivoli Bread and Baking and to everyone who made donations towards the festivities. And also a special debt of gratitude to clerk Bruno, who knows everything, is endlessly patient and makes it look like I know what I'm doing. So, thank you. At the Tivoli Free Library tomorrow and Friday, there is an opportunity to go and wrap presents that perhaps you don't want to wrap at home, for whatever reason, no judgment. There's supplies there. You can bring your own and that's just in the afternoon. And the library's going to be closed from the 23rd to the 26th. The Page Turners Book Club, the selection this month is The Snow Child, which is, it seems like it's sort of a supernatural-ish theme set in 1920s Alaska. And they'll be meeting to discuss that on January 18th, 8:00 PM. The usual excellent programs are going on, tech assistance for seniors, preschool story hour with Ms. Penny, Scrabble Nights on the second Wednesday of each month, and Tarot Club every Thursday. And our favorite's the hookers, 10 to 2 every Thursday. Fiber enthusiasts gathering for potluck and conversation. So there's all that. And you can go to the Tivoli Free Library website to, to check it all out. Historic Resources are pretty quiet this month because it's winter. But, you know, Montgomery Place and Alana and Claremont are always great for walking. And maybe we have a couple of weeks where it'll be cold enough where there's no ticks. And so there's that. At Alana on January 1st, there's what's called the First Day Hike. And it's just an opportunity to get up, you know, start the new year right, get a little exercise, take a mile and a half walk on the carriage path, and niched pets are allowed. So that's at 10:30 on New Year's Day. Natural Resources, deer season is over, but everybody looks good in orange, so maybe still wear it when you're out there. And that's it.
Can I add a brief thank you there as well to any and all of our vendors who committed to being upstairs on the third floor during Winter Fest? We did have quite a few folks come through and grab some gifts for their loved ones, if you will. And looking forward to seeing more up there next year.
And thank you trustee Schneider for organizing that. I've had my Asian smoked almonds in my van. Thank you all. I want to let folks know that the most recent issue of the Bard Free Press came out this week. There's a bossy version which you might be able to find at Murray's or Tivoli General or on campus. There are a number of good articles in there, but one of them is called Town and Gown Then and Now. And we've, we've read it. A number of us were interviewed for it. You may have seen this young gentleman Hayden Hard, who's a journalist and editor of the Free Press. He was at our November 19th, November 16th Water and Sewer Meeting. He was at the community potluck. And I know he talked to a lot of people, not just, you know, the village board, but residents. He wrote a pretty thoughtful and nuanced article. And I think, you know, the sort of town gown article gets written in the Free Press every two or three years and it's usually sort of the same article. And I think, I think it was a little different this time. So I'd encourage you to take a look at it, see what you think. And I think we find that perhaps it summarizes, you know, and records some of the slow and, and real change that we've been seeing in town gown relations and in what it's like to live three miles from a college and have so many students in our midst. So I was pretty pleased with it. Anything to say on that?
Yeah, no, I think it was terrific. I mean, it really sort of hits it on community. And, you know, we're all sharing this space. The board is, you know, recognizing each other and.
And it's nice to see the narrative change a little bit because it means that the situation's changed a little bit. And I think, you know, I read this one and I read the one from three years ago and they're very different. So. I want to mention with winter coming, we do have our brand new one-ton dump truck, Ram 3500, Boss Plow, big, big dump on the back. So you should be seeing that around the village. We also have a new sander, so we are prepared for the winter. And fortunately through, you have no idea how much clerical work from clerk Bruno. The village is going to get a nice check from FEMA for last March's 26-inch snowstorm that came right before St. Patrick's Day. That was declared an emergency. And we were entitled to recoup our, our expenses and exposure by the fire department. And it's going to be a pretty nice check that is going to more than cover the sander and help offset some of the cost of new trucks. So. Some bad news is we now need to replace one of the pickups badly, the one that's got the sander in it. And I think it will maybe be able to carry the sander throughout the winter and then it's about done. So we, if we replace that truck, we will have three trucks that are less than five years old. And the plan going forward is to use them and then when they, you know, five or seven years or so, sell them off, get a new one, roll it over, and keep the fleet up and, and in good condition so that we're not having junky trucks break on Wednesday, the snow's coming Thursday. We dump good money into them just because we need it Thursday and that's just not a winning long-term strategy. So we're really trying to break those, that pattern in the village. And when you see the new truck, that's the beginning of that. So. We're also going to have some winter work here in Village Hall. In the last several winters, we've been redoing the rooms one by one. This room got redone. Cracks fixed, painted, et cetera, clerk's office, mayor's office. We're going to be doing the zoning office and the entire halls, three floors all the way up this winter. Trying to take care of this beautiful old building we have. And there is a generous donor, I'm not sure if they wish to remain anonymous, but I will say that she hooks and stitches on Thursday mornings, who has offered to donate the expense to sand and repaint our front doors here at Village Hall, which have been badly in need of that for some time. So I want to thank them. And if they're going to let me tell you who they are, I will be sure to do so next month. So when spring comes, we'll get the front doors looking as good as, say, this room and whatnot. With that, we would like to open the floor to public comment on any topic. And I just want to thank you all for being here tonight. There are nights when we speak to an empty room and it is so meaningful for us, particularly when we have hard decisions to make to have you here. So with that, thanks for being here and we're here to listen to you. Where are you going to listen to? Joe Hey.
I'm going to represent the ignoramus Johnny Come Lately vote. The 9 million figure. So on the other side, the other decision, what's that kind of come out to in terms of the taxation and stuff?
So, so the water and sewer services are paid for through the quarterly bills, right? So it's outside every realty property tax. And the, the infrastructure and the damage and the, you know, the needs are there regardless of who owns and runs it. So the list of repairs is the same whether it's us or the authority. And so the costs are very, very close. And in this third, the smaller study, there are projections of continued village ownership and DCWWA ownership. And those quarterly projections are off like $10, you know, between the two.
So it's the same amount but paid to a different set of people?
Basically, yes. And then if you really want to dig deeply into this, these projections are based on several assumptions. One assumption that is significant to acknowledge is that they assume that under village ownership, it's the five of us and our successors and one clerk chasing nine and a half million dollars, winning grants, administering grants. And I just referenced the several months of paperwork that Robin did to get $10,000 from FEMA. So picture a loan or a grant of millions. So in that scenario, we would have to hire more people. And that cost is not in this report if we hire a grant writer, if we hire a project manager and all the engineers and whatnot. So in that scenario, village ownership is actually more expensive. So again, it's all projections. The projections are for five years. The further out you go, the harder it is to have a real good projection. But I hope that answers your questions somewhat.
I think the other nuance here is that that is $9 million worth of new infrastructure that, that hopefully will be achieved in that five-year period. So it won't happen immediately because immediately we have to get the district set up, we have to get the transfer achieved. We have to do a lot of that administrative task. But once, but we will be looking for grants and looking for loans to, and following the plan for that during that administrative process. So the full weight of that, it, the assumptions in the plan, whether whichever way it's done, it will be done through low-interest financing over a 30-year period, which is how you get to only double your water bill to achieve that much capital improvement in that short a time. And then additional costs will occur over the next five years and the last 10 years. But those are modest in comparison to the costs that are identified for the first five years.
And the other assumption in this is that it's just you borrow everything because you can't do a projection based on, well, we're going to win some grants.
Right. Well, maybe. But how would they finance it on their side then? If they're, if we hand it all over to them, what, how are they going to?
They're going to charge us.
Yeah, but they're going to do like a, the same, you know.
A low interest, a low interest or no interest loan from the state or other grants that could offset that. But the projections in here are based on you just go borrow this huge amount of money, you fix everything, and then you just pay it off over 30 years. And that's, you know, we're going to pay. There's no.
One way or the other. Is there any kind of comparison between their supposedly organization that does this all the time? Are there any efficiencies in that that you gain? Or is it basically because you don't have to handle the bureaucracy of it, right?
Well, I think my personal sort of, it's like, I could shoot rock, right? But I'm not built for it. So it's better to hire somebody who does it all the time, right? Because they know what they're doing. So I think there's definitely that, right? But they're also.
Their economies of scale because they already handle like 11 water systems and sewer systems and such and such. And so they can, when they buy chemicals, they can buy involved and that. You know, I don't, I don't think they're tremendous, but there are economies of scale for them.
And if you do have to go for commercial financing, they have a better credit rating than the village does. But the assumption is that because this is water and sewer infrastructure, it is eligible for financing through the Clean Water Act and so forth. And they have good experience in acquiring that kind of financing.
That's also the intent of that last resolution that we passed that allows us to pursue funding whether or not that water system stays with the municipal ownership or is transferred to the Water Authority. So that sort of allows that potential grant fund or grant funding regardless of the ownership and during that transition.
It also gives you a consistency of management. So I've, I've been on this board for nearly 12. Started out coming in right after Marcus Molinaro. So we had $600,000, I think, to put some water and sewer lines in on Montgomery Street that he had raised. And then through Crawford and Associates, we managed to raise about $100,000 to $200,000 a year in financing, but we were doing one project at a time. If you, then, then we had a new administration come in who changed engineers on us. And that brought the process virtually to a halt because the engineer had to become aware of what they needed to do. So we had five years there where we didn't do any of that. And that literally, if you're doing $200,000 a year, puts you a million dollars behind on the, on the staging of this process. So you have all of those risks. If you're with an entity who does this, that is their job, that's their. They should be and are with other municipalities consistent about going after the funds and staging their projects.
Do you want to make one other comment about continuity of service there? I just want you to think about the fact that we have Jimmy, who just celebrated 35 years with the village, which is amazing. And the Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority has relationships with contracted licensed operators. So we think about the scale of our staff, but also continuity of service. Whereas again, we have Jimmy. They have, I want to say a multitude of licensed operators.
Jimmy here? Jimmy's not here. I think.
Jimmy was down in a hole on Fairland.
Maybe he has a strong opinion.
He might have a very strong opinion on that.
He seems to smile a lot, actually.
He missed a little.
He works hard and he's, he's sort of apolitical on these things. But you will recall if you were at the first meeting and someone asked the question of the DCWWA directors, who's going to come in 2:00 in the morning? And she said, we will. And Jimmy went, woo-hoo! That says something. I mean, you know, he's been fantastic and there are great people out there. But again, you know, he's, he's been here 35 years and so particularly, you know, a superintendent may last through six administrations like this guy has. But, you know, our terms are two years and, you know, historically, I mean, 12 years for Susan is on the long side. And these projects, we're talking 20, 30-year projects. And so to have changes of administration or engineer, you know, there's no guarantee of any sort of consistency on a project that must be consistent, you know.
Where are they?
Where are?
Oh, there.
They're everywhere.
But they, they operate here, so we're.
Yeah, they're, they're based out of Kipsey. But they, you know, probably the best known is they have been running the water systems in the town in Hyde Park for the last few years. They take over little systems from private, you know, subdivision and the developer left and there's 20 houses on it.
They run one system in Red Hook.
They actually run more than one.
They own 10 acres and.
Also the condos that are out by the.
Robeby and the T Lane, I think they're in the.
Yes, the T Lane, the, okay, yeah, towards my own.
Marty, did you have?
So, well, how would you sum up the objections to this then? What, what is the controversy? What's the objection? It seems very clear to me that it's a good move, but I'm puzzled by.
Well, I think the objections begin, it has to do with whether you want to believe what is in these reports, whether you find this qualified engineer's work credible or not. That will, if you don't and you want to say, they're saying that and we could do it cheaper and we don't really need to do what, they said we got to replace that widget, we don't really need to. Those, that's the line where the objections begin. I for one, not being an engineer and knowing that this was $80,000 worth of work that, you know, Duchess County Planning believed in to give us that money. And we had 13 engineers. I, I'm inclined to believe what's in here. It's the best.
I sat in on that. I believe.
Right. Marty served on the little committee that sort of went along with this process. So that begins the objections. I think, you know, cost, the reality is, it's gonna cost us more. We are gonna, you get what you pay for. And we are gonna start paying a lot more than we have been historically used to. That's something anyone can object to.
Sure.
And it's understandable. And, and that's some, you know, when I said we agonize, that's the part that I agonized over, is what's this gonna do to certain members of our community. But we also have to fix this stuff. So, you know, just starting with, we're gonna do this cheaply, I don't think is the responsible thing to do. I think the responsible thing to do is say, what needs to get done? How's it gonna happen? And then how can we do it most affordably? After the fact, like, you know?
I think the objection that is usually voiced first, and it's one that I voiced, which is when I first contemplated this, is, well, the village no longer has control. You've given the control for this utility to somebody else. And where I get comfortable on that is I say, well, I don't have any control over the delivery of electricity to my house either. But I know that that electrical utility, and sometimes the price goes up, I get upset. But I do know that there are rating agencies that oversee that utility, that I am not the only one interested in, in what they, that utility's rates are and how they do it. And to some degree, you have the same kind of oversight going over this entity. So the control is more dispersed. But it is there, it's less personal, but it's still there.
And when the winds come through and knock down a bunch of utility poles, we don't have to put them back up. Somebody else does that for us. And we pay, but, you know, it's that level of response. And I think, Marty, another objection is, if you don't understand or wanna believe what the water authority is, that's a place where, and that's why I made, called special attention to like, this is not a company or a corporation. How was this thing created? Why was it created? Who are they? Because, you know, I've had conversations and they say, you're gonna privatize this. Well, no, we're not. That's not what this is. They don't have shareholders. So I think, once you really understand it, I think there are frankly few objections, valid objections. But it's, it's very emotional and it's very wrong. We know it's, you know, we've been under pressure for a long time. And it, it takes time for people to think about this, you know, with a cool head and, rationally. So I, I have not heard too many really strong, cool objections that, that for me outweigh the, the pros, but.
Now, do they have, I'm sorry if I can go ahead.
Sure.
Do they have a built-in replacement cost and obsolescence multiplier in their figures?
Yep.
Which we have not had, right? Isn't that why we're, we're?
Yes, theirs, theirs is approximately a two percent increase every year.
Right.
And that's what we should have been doing.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's.
And that's, and that's politically unpopular for elected officials to come and say, we're gonna raise your rates every year.
So that's where.
But now, now people are, I've had people say, well, why didn't you raise our rates every year?
Because then there would be an office, right? That's where it goes back to that continuity of surf, of service and how important that dynamic can be when you are assigning this project to an elected board.
In the back, yes?
I'd like to commend the board for passing the resolution today and moving this forward because it's, it's been a long time coming and things are just getting worse. So unless we do something and move it along, which you started the first step tonight, I'm very glad that you were able to do that. And I think we should move forward as, as quickly as we can.
Well, thank you very much. You know, the timing is, has been a concern. Obviously, we have just got two breaks in a week here. And we don't, you know, we wanted to give it the time so everyone could hear about it, become aware, educate themselves and, and speak with us. But we also can't wait forever, as you point out. And we really appreciate that, that support. And I wanna let everyone know that if this travels to a vote, a village vote on that drawing of that district, we will need your support to keep this going. So don't, don't tune out at this point. Like, this is the time to tune in and stay tuned in. Thank you.
What timeframe would that be, Joel? Like for a vote? I mean, you look at what, six months from now? You know, if it does come to that?
I think that's probably short. You know, we have to, first you have to draw up the transfer agreement and have both the authority and the village, you know?
Yeah, let's see.
So really, timing is gonna depend on how quickly that first step actually comes to.
So I think twelve to eighteen months might be more realistic. Yeah.
Yeah.
And until then.
No, is there, is there only a vote if there are five percent of the community that?
That's right.
Yep.
It's permissive referendum.
So it doesn't, it has to be your referendum.
Right.
Yeah.
But it is a very low threshold. That would actually trigger that referendum.
Yeah. I'm glad we have a lot of comments. Kathy?
I know it's a long way off, but when you do draw up the agreement with, if and when you draw up the agreement with the authority, will it be possible to include a prescription for promoting reservation?
Conservation.
Conservation of water. For, you know, I, I would like to encourage people to spend the extra dollar to get that showerhead replaced that uses minimal amount of water or plant those plants that do not require, you know, prolific watering. So I, I, I think, I hope that's taken into consideration when you do the contract with them.
Okay. Pete?
Just a, a comment, I guess, more than anything else. Pete asked my, my question. So, so you guys are off the hook on that one. You know, I've come from being totally opposed to being grudgingly in favor, basically, of this happening. And, and the evolution is just through facing facts. My, my objection originally, I would have to say is probably more of a romantic attachment to the concept of autonomy more than anything else, you know? And like with Susan, the thing, I want to be in control. And I also want Jimmy to live forever. And, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
And keep working forever.
Right.
And keep working forever. That's most important. And, but so I think that at the end of the day, for me, I've been thinking about this a lot lately, and I think the situation we're in, I think it really sucks that we have, that we are in a position as a village that we even have to make this decision and this vote at all. And what I think we have here are, are two object lessons, both in how small and large government can fail and succeed as well. I mean, we fail because we go for years paying more attention to politics or budget cuts or any other things and bypassing the, the work that we know needs to be done on the system and just, just kicking it down the can for us right now, right this second to be dealing with. And, you know, at the same time, to me, it's also sort of a success. I, I've watched you guys work really hard and truly agonize over this, 'cause I don't think it's easy. And the objections that are voiced were pretty strong objections, even though I do think that they're probably in the smaller part of the population. And I just wanna say, I really appreciate that because to me, that is you guys, instead of looking out for politics, you guys are actually, I believe, looking out for the village and making difficult, difficult decisions on our behalf. And I know that that can't be easy and I appreciate it. And thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Pete and then Joe?
I'm on second. Pete's comments, like, bravo to the board for moving this forward. Also, bravo to Theater on the Road, the awesome play. And a great Winterfest and the dump truck. Is that gonna be sealed bid or?
We're gonna list it with an auction company and they take like ten percent. The, the buyer takes, pays the ten percent commission to the company, but it'll be public, we're piggybacking on the county's contract that this auction has. So I, hopefully it'll go to a lot of eyes and someone will see value in that James Bond, gotta wait truck.
I was hoping it's something else.
Well, you'll see, you know? I, I do have the, it does say at the bottom in the resolution, if I don't get any bids, I can sell for scrap. So. Joe?
Has there been, and I, again, having not been at the other meetings, I don't know about this, but has there, have there been any representatives of the authority here?
Yes.
Okay.
And the engineers.
And the.
All right. So you know what you're getting for your nine million.
And the tie and bond group who did this study.
In addition to that, we have taken the time to talk to other folks who have their water systems that are run by the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority to see what their experience has been and.
Yeah, we had Aileen Moore, the supervisor of the town of Hyde Park, come and speak to the board. And she said it allowed her to suddenly work on everything else that that town needed. And she went from sixty percent of her time being taken up with the water situation to that sixty percent being freed up for every other thing that is asked of a supervisor. And she had no regrets.
So I'm not hearing too many objections in the, in the group tonight, but I certainly don't, I think it's great. I mean, tonight we got Jimmy on crutches.
In a hole.
Ralph. Hired Frank Bosberg to dig the hole. I mean, we're all ready. Tonight's a pretty clear example. This water system's become through, through time and age has become bigger than us. That's what it all comes down to for me. And we need help. And I commend you. I think it's great. I think if, if it wasn't for the system going in by Eleanor Roosevelt in thirty, I mean, it's been a miracle that we've been riding. And I, I think it's.
And if we didn't have such a great, you know, superintendent and, and Department of Public Works, we probably would have been here twenty years ago.
I remember Woody Neese and Jimmy on Christmas Day breaking a hole in the blacktop over by the tower.
Yeah.
Twenty years ago. You know, that's a thing of the past.
I, I'm gonna, gonna echo Peter's comments about the, the romantic version and the reality version because.
Jimmy also had a great mustache.
That when I, when I first came, this first year, I served on the board. The board won, the village won an award for that reed bed that they had installed in the, at the sewer plant to do the last stages of cleaning the water. And the, the fact is that that reed bed was achieved by individuals in the village going out and pulling the, the reeds out of farmers' fields and bringing them over to that. And we had Tom Cordier and Marty and Harry Cogan and two or three other people planting them at the sewer plant. And we actually have a younger board now with one exception. But we got a lot of other things we'd rather be doing than planting the reed bed. And so that, that is a wonderful stage that, that we went through. But I think this is the new stage. And one of the things that was fun reading this report was all of the technology that they will be able to engage in to lower the cost of many of the repairs. So for example, the, the sewer pipes, which are many of them the old clay.
Tar paper.
What is it?
Tar paper.
Yeah, yeah. Will be lined by a new process that sends a, a super lining through the pipe. So you won't even have to dig the hole to lay the pipe. Well, those are clearly going to be cost-effective measures and ones that you would if you had to have the right engineer to come up with if we were doing it ourselves.
Well, thank you.
That's a comment. I mean, I, I agree. I think this is definitely the way to go. But as part of this, I imagine there will be service-level agreements with the authority? Are they actually custom tailored to the village or is this a line of policy? Do we have any say in, you know, determining the configuration and the operation of the system? The chemicals used, et cetera, et cetera. And, and is there a clause? That's safe. Shouldn't happen, but they failed on the job. Is there a way to terminate the contract? Is, is all that sort of building to these agreements typically?
So, did you wanna go first?
I was just going to say that they assume all of the responsibilities of administering, running the entire system. There are opportunities for the village to have input on the process. You know, we referenced before, is there an opportunity for us to build in, you know, say, an initiative for water conservation? There's an opportunity for us to create the agreement that is right for our system. I also want to clarify that, you know, there was some back and forth about funding and would dollars that we're putting into this system be reallocated to any of the other systems that are run by the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority? And I think it's really important to note that all of the money into this system stays in our system, right? They're not going to take any of the money for capital improvements here and apply that to a different system. So it's all sort of locked into a typical system. I don't know if you wanna address the hazer, any way to get out of it?
Part of why this is such a big and difficult decision is once we transfer, we never get it back, no matter when it's theirs.
You're transferring your assets, is what you're doing. It's not just an operating agreement. They're really discussing transferring assets. Okay.
Yeah. So that's, that's the decision we need to make.
That's right. There's a lot of gravity to this.
One, you know.
We can, we can establish an advisory board where we communicate as a community with them.
That's one of the opportunities I was referring to for us to.
One of the things that we can consider.
And, you know, the, the perfect choice for which we definitely wanna have an advisory committee in the transfer agreement created that's standing after, say, transfer happens, which might involve like the mayor, a trustee, several citizens, this group that's gonna work with the authority as, and, you know, it's an advisory group. But the water tower, so if you haven't heard, that water tower is gonna have to be replaced. We care in this community, the romance, a lot about what it looks like.
Look at our village steel.
The cheapest one is also the ugliest one, right? So we wanna have a committee that's at the table as they're shopping and looking. And, you know, so that they will hear from this community that maybe this community's willing to pay a little more to have an attractive water tower than, than just get the cheapest one. So having that advisory committee established in the transfer agreement, I think is something we absolutely are going to do. Yeah. Pete?
The advisory committee, though, that would, none of that would be binding, right? That would just be, okay. What I would love, just as a citizen and as a romantic, is I would love for there to be, have built into the contract an ability for us to have some say over the aesthetics of the water tower, like you're just saying. I just wanna make sure that we can actually, you know, even if it costs a little bit more, I at least would be happy to pay that. And.
Pay for that?
Give it my bill.
Did you say you'd pay for that?
Yes, I'll, I'll pay for that. And, and I'd also like to put in yet another plug for going back to silver paint with black block letters, old school.
Yeah, we'll bring that up in the discussion.
I know, I know we talked about the water tower before, about that's gonna get replaced. The tower you got now is too small to handle fire loads that goes down.
It's gonna be bigger.
So when you go to design this new tower, whatever it is, I don't think you're gonna be able to, to put that kind of a tower up on four legs and set it up in the air because you're talking at two hundred, three hundred thousand gallon tank, tank a tower.
There is a, there is a witch's hat model with four legs at that size. Yes.
Well, that's gotta be.
We've already researched that.
Oh, yeah.
It's actually the, because I asked this engineer before we even got very far, once I heard like, oh my gosh, that tower's gotta go. No mayor wants to tell this village about that.
We didn't tell you for months.
The footprint, the footprint is actually the same, but rather than angling in, they're straight up and down. And that's how you, by the time you get up a hundred and fifty feet, it's how you have the added volume.
Well, that's a deal breaker.
I'm very often designed somehow that people can't climb up those ladders so that we don't have to go keep climbing them.
Yes, I think it'll be.
And it's not necessarily gonna be in the park, right, the new tower?
There are two possible locations. One is in the, well, there are three actually. One is exactly where it is currently, in which case you dismantle that tower, put up a temporary super bladder and hold the water, and then build a new tower on the same footprint. The other one is that tower, the old tower stays, you build a new one right next to it. And then the third location is the McKnight Wellfield, which is a large moat, grassy area west of Monument Hill, across from Clay Hill Road, when you come out with that odd little building in the middle.
I vote for that.
So if it goes there, can that one just kinda stay there in the park?
I don't think we're gonna be able to keep the old tower up. It'll become a rusty liability. Probably not, so.
Not maintained.
And we could put the tennis courts there.
Alex? Alex?
I just want to congratulate you guys on making this really hard decision. Thank you for it. And just want to encourage you to stay focused while you're negotiating with them, that you maintain as much local control as you're capable of doing. And also to talk about Pete's point about this sucks, is that just isn't something that happens through some sort of evolutionary thing. It's done through political decision-making. And as we look today and we see the tax cuts that are going to add 100, 1.5 trillion dollars, we know that we're going to have to pay for that sometime, as we today are paying for what was not done in the past.
And I also would like to say, sorry, as the newcomer to the board, coming on board, I didn't know this was creed until I came on the board. I was like, wow, this is amazing. Because over the course of the years before I moved back to town, I was gone for 20 years and paying attention what's happening in different places where I live. I don't know if you know, Usyk Falls went through a PFOA. There's Newburgh recently, Flint, Michigan. I mean, I think the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater was created to help communities with these issues. And I think the cans have been kicked down the road enough that we have to face up and say, we want to keep this community, we want the community to have a future.
And I hope so, not for profit.
Yes. That's what I was saying, Chris, and part of the future, Tivoli, I mean, how about our business community, right? This village has worked so hard in that that Renaissance was always coming, right? And in fits and starts over my lifetime. And it's more robust now than I think it's ever been. And it's taken so long and so much work and so much luck to get that. And that depends on reliable water and sewer. I mean, we have had to go into the restaurants when they're fully seated and tell them, you're going to have no water in 10 more minutes. That, if I were an entrepreneur, business person, that does not make Tivoli seem like a good place to take a chance on a business and, you know.
I've seen businesses in town that feel, every time you're like, they're like.
Yes. I mean, just tonight, you know, just tonight, we had to tell Trokhaven, Osaka, Porcinaro was closed, but, you know, and last Wednesday, it was Panzur, you know?
Well, and Murris.
And Murris. And that keeps happening. And, you know, it's not just about our homes and the, you know, individual water use, but the reliability of, you know, these services for, we're the restaurant destination, right? We need some water.
And also the vibrancy of our communities.
Wait, that's how we could get rid of the restaurants.
And also, you know, Tom, Tom mentioned it, but, you know, fire protection is the other big issue here. This fat tank and these pipes are not just for your drinking water. It is every bit as much, perhaps more, for putting out that fire when it comes to your house. And our tank is undersized, our pipes break. We've seen calls where they got to tie up and they open the hydrant and boom, there goes the water main. And they have to go get water from somewhere else. I mean, that, that's a big part of what has caused us to choose this as well, is fire protection, so. Other public comments? I'm glad you liked Winterfest, Pete.
That was awesome.
Yeah, how about our new Santa? He was very good.
I hope we have him for a long time.
We've got you on trial, kid. When he couldn't understand the name, he would say that and I thought that was very clever.
That request.
It was also as we went around on the fire truck and he'd just read the mailbox, you know, like, Merry Christmas to Joneses! He got really into it, it was great, so. Any other public comments?
Is it permissible to applaud?
I don't think we have any rules about that. Thank you all, we really appreciate you coming, your support and your continued interest in this. This is just the beginning and we're not out of the woods yet. I'm sure we'll be fixing more broken water mains before this is over.
I move.
Move to the jury. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
821, thank you all.